Beneficial, so thank you. And I support the letter, which I thought was very well-written and did not commit Pecosin too much of anything other than investigation, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Nora and Andy Rule? Either one or both?
Sir, at this time we have been taken down.
You sure?
Yes.
Okay. Libby Grebel, I saw Libby here somewhere, Libby?
I'm Libby Grebel, I live at 46 Shoreline Drive. As of this month, I've lived there for 69 years. So, I have seen the water, as most of you have said, continue to diminish in water depth and continue to silt in. And I would just like to say that I would like to see the letter move forward and let's investigate it, let's see the outcomes of those investigations, there are environmental studies, there are all kinds of studies that will have to be performed. But I think that there is enough support here to at least let the letter go forward and let's see what comes of that letter. There was a letter, I guess, that came in from York County, I've been all over the website today, I was unable to locate that, so I don't know what Chairman Noel had to say about that, so is it out on the website?
I am not aware of the letter from Chairman Noel.
Well, the reason I ask that is because I personally did not know about this meeting, and shame on me because I didn't, but it says Mayor Hassel received an update, this was last meeting, from York County Administrator Neil Morgan, in reference, I'm sorry, I said Noel, in reference to Lambs Creek dredging project, he will be sending out copies of the letter to the council. And I was looking for that letter because I thought that would be posted. Just out of curiosity, what?
Just a minute, Libby, is that letter online?
I believe the reference there is to the letter that is the subject of discussion this evening.
Well, I didn't read it that way and I may be wrong.
I'm unaware of any letter we have received from Chairman Noel on this subject.
And I misspoke when I said Chairman Noel. It said, this was at the last meeting. Mister, uh, let's see. Mayor Hassel also stated the city workers did a great job on the corridor coming into the city. Mayor Hassel received an update from York County Administrator Neil Morgan in reference to the Lambs Creek dredging project, he will be sending out copies of the letter to council this, for review, this week for review. So that's, I was looking for the letter, just to see what the letter had to say, because I don't know, I mean, I don't know what.
Let me just get it clear for you, Libby, is the letter that we wrote, we wanted some amount of discussion tonight, is that on the website?
Yes, sir. I believe that the reference, Ms. Grebel, is, I don't know how it's punctuated, we did receive a update and have a discussion with the county administrator and the chairman of the board of supervisors. Separate from that, I believe the mayor was speaking about this letter that was the subject of discussion this evening.
Not the letter that you were trying to move forward, this was something that came from York County, is the way I read this.
I understand that.
Did you not receive a letter from Neil Morgan in reference to this?
I have not, I have not.
You have not? Okay, all right, well, that gets us across. Secondly, I did want to just make some additional comments, I think that we that live on the water, have been on the water for many years, have paid our fair share of taxes living on the waterfront, and I think that as we move forward and we find out what it's going to take if we decide to move forward with dredging, that not only are we expected to pay for it, but then after we pay for it and we get good water, then we're going to be taxed even higher. So I feel like that revenue that is coming in, that has come in from waterfront properties over the years, over the last 50 years, someone spoke, they have gone to the benefit of the community, I mean, they haven't just been held on Emus Road or off of those tributaries there, it's been distributed among the city, just like I don't have children in school. I did when I was in school, when I had children in school, you know, we pay the taxes, but I haven't had children in school for many, many years. But I understand as a community, that's part of being in a community, is to provide funds for a lot of activities that you may not participate in. So I would like the council to keep that in mind, that not only are there high taxes, I pay an exorbitant amount of taxes where I live, and I can only expect that they would increase if this dredging were to take place, which I am in favor of. I don't have a boat, I don't even have a pier, my pier went down in Isabel, it's never been rebuilt, because I have, I'm not a water person, my father was a waterman, but I can remember when my dad was boating, and this has been many years ago, back in the early 2000s, he could pull his boat up to our pier, and he had, I think it was a 28 or 30-foot Chris crab. And so at that, and during that time, it was a nice-sized boat, and he could, we could walk out of our house and get on that boat. That would never happen, you know, never happen today. But secondly, I digress, I just would like for us to look into grants, I did just a little bit of research before I came in here tonight, there are a couple, and Mr. Hassel, you may, Council, Mayor Hassel, you may have some information on this or some knowledge of an act that was passed by the General Assembly, and it may not be applicable, I'm not sure, but it was an act amended to the Code of Virginia adding section 62.1 through 62.34, and it's, it was enacted to amend the Code of Virginia by adding these sections relating to the Virginia Waterway Maintenance Fund Grant Program. And I don't know if you're familiar with that, if that's even applicable here, but I do think that if we move forward, and I please encourage you to do that, let it play out, let's see what happens, and if there is grant money available, then maybe it is. And I also pulled up another article while I was doing this today, I have lots of time on my hands. There was a eastern shore project that's being done, and they have used this grant money to do four projects on the eastern shore. And if anybody wants to look at this, it's from the Eastern Shore Post that I thought was pretty interesting, and it said, "Alcamack and North Hampton Counties in July of 20 were awarded 426,500 from the Virginia Port Authority through the Virginia Water Maintenance Fund." So that is something that is in the code that, I'm not a grant writer and I don't know any, I don't know anyone it is, but I do think it's certainly an option that needs to be pursued, and I encourage the council to let this play out and let's see, let's get the information, let's get informed on what this is all about and what our options may be at the end of the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim O'Connell, Mr. O'Connell?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address the.
Absolutely.
I live at 402 Chincopan Orchard, lived there a few months short of 30 years. When I got a sense of the working groups' discussions and viewpoints tonight, and I'd just like to summarize what I kind of heard from the audience. There was this, well, we have 87 miles, much of it might be get silted in, where we might set a precedent, so we're going to do nothing, even though there's a lot of people that would like, you know, some knowledge discoveries, some investigation, maybe some leadership. We have billions of dollars in federal infrastructure funds, we have hundreds of millions of dollars in Virginia funds. If you team with York County, get some hard data, get some sense, and then maybe we'll be much more eligible to compete for those funds. But we're just going to do nothing, and eventually, all the waterways, we're going to be silted in, and you're going to kick it down to future city councils to do something, is that the responsible way to do? I think the responsible thing to do is to investigate, to gather data, to get a sense of the community, and then compete for grant money if tax money's not available or whatever, but to just do nothing because it's too hard, there could be issues, that to me doesn't seem like the responsible thing for a council to do. We should address problems before they become crises. Thank you for the opportunity to address.
Thank you, sir. Kimberly Hand sail, did I do that right?
Yeah.
Kimberly?
Thank you, I just have a few talking points. So I am from Lambs Creek originally, born and raised there for 30 years, now Marina Manager at White House Cove Marina. So from my experience over the last six months, I know that this won't be an isolated creek issue, but I do think that it, as Mr. O'Connell had said, it does behoove us to go ahead and develop these plans. I currently can't have transients, which brings in city tax dollars as well, they can only come into our port at high or medium-high tide, based on the dredging. I know that's not specifically rated to Lambs Creek, but I do know that it will be a continuing problem throughout. I know I'm not the only marina on Bennetts Creek either, but I do think that we should take this opportunity to develop a plan for the future for Pecosin in general, for our whole community, because it will not just be Lambs Creek. Growing up, I remember with my brother, we were able to swim in the water, we were able to fish in the water, now we can't even catch a flounder in our crab pot if we can even catch a crab, nor do we even enjoy swimming in the nasty water. I live five houses down from where that water comes from, the public roads and dumps in. I've watched it for the last 30 years, we can only go out between two-hour gap windows, come in between two-hour gap windows, most of the time we had to leave our boat out somewhere else. So I just do know that this will be a continuing issue for the city, not just now in Lambs Creek. I think that while we have the support from York County, it would behoove us to go ahead and explore those options, investigate, because this will be something that future councils will have to deal with for other creeks as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Colonel Lippincott?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Bob Lippincott, I live at 33 Carriage Hill Drive, and I was here six months ago, and I showed you some slides back then, that Lambs Creek was nothing but a mud flat. At low tide and medium tide, high tide, you could get out plus or minus an hour, and that's going to be getting worse every day. I lived on the creek for 42 years, and when I moved here, you could get in and out at any tide, it was great. That creek was dug in 1975, in my opinion, the city council back then made a huge mistake when he gave Timmy Moore permission to dig that creek by not requiring a maintenance program, and that is to come back and dredge it in five, 10, whatever number of years, it wasn't done. At the same time, they put in the outfall pipes, York County and Pecosin. Every time it rains, we get the street dirt, rocks, debris flushing into the creek. And that's not just the people that live on the creek, that's the entire neighborhoods that drain into that stormwater system. So that is shared by more than just us. Now, Pecosin is known as a water town, a recreational town on the water, and we support our watermen and crab and oysters and that sort of thing, we're known for that. That's going to go away when these creeks all fill in, and it's going to happen because we're doing nothing about it. Now, York County has been trying for 15 years to come up with a plan to do this, Pecosin has done absolutely nothing. I want to change that, I want you city council members to think about that and be positive about this dredging. Now, the big issue, of course, is money, how do you pay for it? We haven't investigated that yet. Some people talk about grants, others talk about the infrastructure funds, of which there's at least $2 billion, I called Warner's Office, available for water projects. So we have to look at that, and they're not going to listen to me, they're going to listen to a city representative or York County representative, ask for that money. If we have to write a grant, fine, if we have to hire a grant writer who's a professional, fine, we'll get this done, and it will not incur a tax on people that live on the creek. Hopefully, we can avoid that. Anyhow, I heard some reservations about why we shouldn't be doing this, many, too many from the city council. One is, not everybody on the creek is in favor of the dredging. Well, that's true. Not everybody on the creek's a Republican, that's true. I wish it were. But you're never going to get 100% of anything, you can't please all the people all the time. So if we can get 80% participation in a positive vein for this dredging project, we've done well. York County apparently thinks the same thing. Dredging will compromise vote with polls, not true. My polls are down 10 or 15 feet, digging down two feet won't affect the polls at all, and they're not going to dredge out along the holes, they're going to dredge the middle of the creek, so that's a specious argument. The city council should not get involved, I've heard that. Well, what's the city council for if not to represent the people in their district and the important projects that they feel should be put forward? If we dredge one creek, we have to dredge them all, not true. We've been working on this for 15 years on Lambs Creek, we have York County ready to participate and pay for half of it, so we're unique in that. And I think the dredging of Lambs Creek should be a prototype for the other creeks that will eventually have to be dredged, and not all of them in Pecosin, but the ones that are going to be important to people that live on them. And if we can get a method to do that, using grant money or whatever money, and we know how to do it, then that'll flow in the future. But Lambs Creek, it's like a squeaky wheel, we've been working on this for many years trying to get support. Now, and I won't go over much about how we're going to pay for it again, but again, my first choice would be grant money. Get a grant writer, have him write the money, write the grant. If we don't know of any in this town, we'll go out and get one. A lot of other towns, Hampton, Norfolk, Chesapeake, and so forth, have done this, so there are writers out there that know how to make this happen. So we just need to contact them, find out that guy's name, and if we have to pay him a thousand bucks, fine, I'll pay him. So, I hope the goal of this meeting is to authorize the mayor to send that letter to York County, which simply mentions joint venture, and tells York County that we're with them in this project. Secondly, I hope, secondly, we can produce a letter that goes out to everybody that lives on the creek, and gets a yes or no that they're in favor of it. There's going to be some no's, but there's going to be a lot more yeses. And I think we should track this one agenda item on the city council, so we don't forget about it, as we have for the last 42 years. So anyhow, that's what I feel about it, and I hope we can get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel. Jenny Dale or Dial?
Dale.
Dale, thank you.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jenny Dale, and I grew up on 33 Carriage Hill Drive, Bob Lippincott is my father, and I just came here tonight to sort of give you guys a different perspective, another way to look at this project. I had a slideshow, but I didn't meet the deadline, so bear with me, people, those being passed around, so if you guys might have it on you.
You do?
So, obviously the problem, we all know what the problem is, when we were talking earlier about the storm drain system, Pecosin is a MS4, it's a Phase 2, it's, we are permitted to discharge, that is what the DEQ gives us to, authority to do, so we can drain our streets and our channels and our ditches. The permit actually is comprised of ditches, waterways, anything that conveys stormwater, so that's your MS4, that's what that means, municipal separate storm sewer system. In our, in Pecosin's TMDL action plan, that is a component of the permit, it is required to be met in 2023, 40% load reduction of phosphorus and other pollutant loads for the Chesapeake Bay TMDL. As you mentioned earlier, you guys have already met that goal, so for that permit cycle, 2023, you guys are good. However, the last additional remaining that was required to be removed, and this is all found on your website, was an additional for suspended solids and nitrogen and phosphorus, you guys opted into HRSD credit banking. Well, that's not doing anything to the environment, it's buying some credits. So in actuality, we're not helping the environment, we're not doing anything, we have purchased The permit plan also allows for the city to make additional pollutant removal projects, you will have another permit cycle in 23 that will go to 28, they're five years long, so that next permit cycle you can start thinking about. You've already met your 23s, and the next permit cycle, this one project could, you know, do a lot of bang for your buck. The three grants that the DEQ offers, the SLAP would be the one that's applicable, like you said, you've already obtained funds for that, but just to let you know that that particular program is a grant, it does match, and there is the PDC that is local that will help you obtain these projects and monies and funds, and will give you that guidance. The SLAP grants, you know, they are, there's many different criterias that have to be met in order to get that money, but some of the examples would be wetland restoration, buffer restoration, which would be very applicable here, and even living shorelines, which somebody mentioned earlier about oysters, well, living shorelines, you know, they create habitat, and you can do breakwaters and different oyster reefs and castles, that also helps with erosion issues. However, the erosion is not necessarily coming from people's property, it's coming from the stormwater drains. It's been silted in, it is pollutants that can be removed that have all come off of the storm drain system. There's also loans, if, you know, the city does not, you know, want to pay for it all upfront, you can get a loan program, and I've already spoken with the Virginia Resources Authority, they actually have a program now that got passed by Biden to do dredging, specifically dredging, so there is a loan program with low interest out there that you guys could possibly look at getting. Some of the pros, just for this one project, would be the removal of that accumulated sediment, I'll say spoils, that is a requirement in MS4 for treating and removing pollutants of concern, and that would be giving the creek more quantity requirements as well as quality, because you're removing the pollutants. So you will, that creek will have more storage for storms, flooding events, resiliency, that's on everybody's plate now, that is a big thing, so we can get ahead of the game and focus on those resiliency efforts, and just, you know, a lot of different things that we can apply to this one project. We also have, property owners will have access to the resource, their property values will be restored, and we're going to restore wildlife and habitat by removing that sludge, BMPs, best management practices, stormwater ponds, you know, they have to be dredged every 30 years. This creek has sort of functioned as that, there's no vegetation on the bottom of that creek, the plants can grow, that means there's no crabs, there's no fish that come up that creek, because it's all polluted loaded. He was saying that oysters didn't really live or survive, well, that's because the bottom is full of contaminants, and oysters would never survive in that kind of environment. So if we get all that muck out, restore it to be a viable system with normal organics and normal bottom composition, you'll have a much livelier and healthier ecosystem. It also gets, the city will also get a return, people will invest with boats and watercrafts, and, you know, people will be going up to 7-Eleven getting their beer and food and ice, so, you know, the city will get a return on the investment. And there's also potential for the city, you know, we will be issuing permits to the people with watercrafts, who will bring in that income. A lot of people on the creek right now don't have boats, there's a lot of boatlifts on that creek, but no boats. So, you know, it's just something to continue, considering one project, you could get all the benefits, you can meet both your, you could meet two or three requirements of your MS4 permit for the next permit cycle, and that would be your education, public outreach, you can bring it to the schools, you can have kids go out there and do like little field and day trips, you can do storm drain stenciling, it's all about the education outreach, that can be done with that project, meeting your TMDL goals for the next permit cycle, coordinating with adjacent MS4s, that's a requirement for the permit, so you're meeting that box. I have spoken with Sean Crawford today, your city engineer, and I know he's new to the city, but that's something that I'm sure he could help you guys out with, and he is there for you as a resource. And this would also mean that we would go in there and do all these things at one time with one permit, don't go in there multiple different times. And then the last thing I would have to say is the outfalls at, in the creek itself, that the city is responsible for maintaining have either been, they're either undersized or they, they're broken, and they've caused erosion themselves along that area where the outfall normally lands. So if you go to the outfalls further up the creek, you can clearly see that the structures have been completely fallen off, broken off. So it is a city's responsibility to do maintenance on that, so here's another opportunity to do the maintenance at the same time of dredging the creek. And there's also one more thing just to throw out there, if you wanted to do more water quality, the city owns, I think, three BMPs, you could add things to the storm drain structures and you could get credit that way too, put a tree in it, filters, there's manufactured treatment devices, there's a lot of opportunity for this town to take to get credit for your MS4, and it's not just about the dredging, so it's about helping the environment. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jimmy Jones? Jimmy Jones? Oregon Throckill? What was the first name, sir, I'm sorry?
Corey.
Okay, thank you.
I have a few pictures of a few of Deltry. You guys might remember I was here six months ago as well, just one sec there. I live on 6 Northwest Overdrive, and thanks, thanks again, first off, for having me and for having everyone here tonight. I want to first just say that I'm very much in favor of the letter to York County, I think it's the right thing for us to do, it's the responsible thing in Pecosin to explore this project, but I also am in favor of dredging, so I'll get my agenda out there right, right away. I think it's in my own personal interest, but I think it's also in the interest of Pecosin as well. I've lived in Pecosin most of my life, exception of going to Old Dominion University and living for a short time in Newport News when I met my future wife, but I immediately brought her, she was a Newport News native, back to Pecosin, and I said, you know, Pecosin is a great place to live, I was raised there, my dad was the doctor here in town, many of you probably know, I went through Pecosin School Systems, I know a lot of people out here, it's a great community, right? And it's a great place for me to raise my family, I brought my wife out here, we have a family now, I have an almost six-year-old son and a nine-year-old daughter, enrolled in Pecosin Schools, and even before I had those kids in Pecosin Schools, I was paying Pecosin taxes, which I was fully on board with, because I love this community, and I think it's a great community. And again, the reason I convinced my wife to move from Newport News to Pecosin. We moved in in 2005, and we lived on another waterfront property off of East Sandy Point, down Brownsnack Road, lived there for quite a while. The flooding got to us, it's much lower, lower property than where we are now, and we decided that it would be in our best interest to move, and we were lucky to find a home on Northwest Overdrive and put an offer in, and we're lucky enough to be accepted, and we love, we love where we live, we love Northwest Overdrive. The one thing that we don't love about it is the creek. We, when we moved in in 2017, the creek was deeper than it is even today, it's only been five years, and I have noticed, and I'm sharing some pictures here, I've noticed that the creek has filled in. And when I was here about six months ago, I told you guys about one of the things that I witnessed and took pictures and shared it with you then, when we did the repaving of the whole West Overshore subdivision, there was a lot of milling that went on, and I watched the contractors shove that right into our outflows, and I showed you the pictures. They were supposed to have mitigation put up, they were supposed to have sandbags, the sandbags failed, some of them, they never even put up, and I watched that just go right in. I spoke to them, I called the city, I never got a return phone call, I'm not mad about that, I know this is a busy bureaucracy we've got here, but at the same time, I want to make the point that it's on us, right? We're citizens of this town, we contracted with that company, I think it was Basic, to come out and to do all that work, they did the work, but they didn't do it the way that they should have. They impacted the environment, they impacted our creek, they definitely caused additional silt to go into our creek. At that time, it was on schedule to do Emus Road and that neighborhood as well, and there were a few folks that were here at that meeting that also expressed their concerns and said, hey, city council, I think they spoke after me, can we make sure that doesn't happen? doesn't happen when we have our section of, of the road paved? Yeah, that, you've got it, yeah. He said, thank you, Mr. Fay. Thank you for having me. He's still got the pictures. And, and I, and I did not do my due diligence to go inspect it and inspect the other neighborhoods. But I hope that the same thing did not happen in their neighborhoods as well, but I fear it probably did. Because I don't think those mitigation, you know, techniques were put in place, right? To make sure that that, all that silt and asphalt did not fall into the creek through the outflows. So just again, to, to make sure that we own the responsibility. It is our creek, right? We share it with York County, but it is our creek. And we have a responsibility to make sure that we're not impacting the environment and that we leave it in an aviable, usable way, especially when we've got so many folks that are on that creek, that are taxpayers, and that have an expectation of being able to use that creek. I'm sure many of you remember this, in 2012, Pecosa came out with the motto, Pecosa is the place, right? I've watched the video. I was very proud in 2012, was a Pecosa native and a Pecosa resident, to see that we were outreaching to folks. I think we were also, right around that time, named one of the best places to live, right? It was an amazing time for Pecosa. And we had this fantastic video that was on YouTube and Vimeo and touting all the benefits of water life, Chesapeake Bay life in Pecosa. There were scenes in those videos of people being on the water boating. You know, there were scenes of, of Brown's Neck and, and, and all the wonderful marinas that we have and, and our fishermen, right? It really, really brought to life what we have, what we have here that is special in Pecosa. I thought it was a great campaign. And I'm sure that it brought additional revenue into the city and it probably brought additional developments, right? We've got a development that's going on right next door to us here. And I'm sure that that was an impetus, right, in 2012, to bringing in that extra revenue. My point in saying all that is that we have a duty. If we're going to advertise that Pecosa is the place, we better make sure it's the place, right? We better make sure that we're living up to those awesome videos that we've got out there, touting our waterfront, touting our recreation, touting all the things you can do if you become a resident of Pecosa. I know everyone's talked about, hey, there's tons of tributaries, tons of creeks in Pecosa. And yes, that's true. I've lived on several of them. I grew up on Windy Point. You want to talk about a dredging project that needs to be done, talk about Windy Point. It's a tough one, right? My mom still lives there. I'm not advocating that we do every single creek in Pecosa. I obviously lived on, on East Sandy Point. That's another one that probably needs to be dredged as well. But this is an opportunity for us. We have a willing partner in York County. You've heard from the York County folks here tonight. Why don't we use their expertise? And at least, if we don't want to call it expertise, their experience so far in talking with the relevant agencies and use what they've got in place. I heard tonight from Jim that, you know, they've got an engineer on, on staff that's willing to help us. This would be a great way for us to model for other creeks in Pecosa. We can set up a, a model for the rest of Pecosa based on what we do here on Lambs Creek and in the subdivisions that are impacted by, by Lambs Creek. One other thing I just want to mention, and I know I talked about this when I was here last time, and it's similar to some other stories that you've heard. I unfortunately did, and I'll just remind, remind you guys, have to go into the creek. I didn't want to. You know, I've, I've lived on creeks in Pecosa and I know that what the silt can do, but my dog, who ended up passing away about a month later, had fallen into the creek. She was half-blind and deaf and had gotten off of her leash, unfortunately. And I went into the creek in December of 2021, or 2020. And I could not get out of the creek. And my wife also had to get a rope to help me get out of the creek. It was scary. I got my, I swam out into the middle of, of Lambs Creek where I am. It's pretty, pretty broad. Swam out in the middle creek to get our dog, who was nearly drowning, and got her, brought her back to the shoreline. And you would think I would just be able to climb up on the rocks and get out. I couldn't. I was stuck in that muck. And I had to get my wife to bring a rope down to help me get out. And I'm a pretty, a pretty athletic guy, right? I should be able to do this. I, I'm scared. We had some friends over, family and friends over for St. Patrick's Day. We were having a great time in the backyard and a couple of kids went down onto our dock and it scared the ever-living you-know-what out of me because I was afraid one of those kids might fall into the creek and what in the world would happen if they did? So I said, all the kids got to come back up to the house. We can't have this happen, right? I'm not saying that dredging would fix that, right? They could still drown. But I'm telling you from my experience, that creek is a danger. And I think we have a, a responsibility to do something about it, in addition to the financial impacts that could positively have on the city and all the people that are sitting here tonight. With that, I'll give up my time. I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, sir. Steve Pappas? Mr. Pappas?
Hi, Steve. Hi, sir. Thank you for listening to us, Mayor Halsel, City Council. It's been a long conversation, obviously. In 1994, I moved here. Not here. I actually moved to York County and I lived at the end of Lambs Creek because I wanted to live on the water, just like I did when I grew up. It was about this much water there. And I realized that that wasn't sufficient. So I moved here to Pecosa, where I still currently have four feet of water at low tide. And I paid dearly for that. Could have bought a property for a lot less in a different county. But I raised my children here. I'm very glad my grandchildren are here as well. So that was in 1994, 28 years ago. I have some issues that I'd like to share. Some of them might be repetitive, but I'll make it quick. Words matter. This is the 21st century, obviously lots of things matter. Words matter. I have a concern about the draft letter as it's written. And I think, Mr. W., you did a great job of putting out emails. Sorry to use your name, but you've done a lot of work. But it's important that words matter. And today, I heard, and I'm here to correct, that based on the draft letter, it states that for purposes of moving forward, the original scope of Mrs. Drake's January 26, 2015 letter, you would agree. In that letter, under the cost approximation section, it states three York County channels and four Pecosa channels.
Steve? Steve? We need you talking to the microphone.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
But I hope you can hear me. So it said four Pecosa channels. The fifth channel is the channel that was originally identified to include the houses facing North Fremore Drive, which had, pick a number, 25 homes. And back in 2015, since I lived here all that time, I knew my neighbors, I knew my neighborhood, there were a lot of retirees, a lot of people without boats, a lot of people who were widows or widowers. And possibly back then, that would have been a problem for the 80%. Today, a lot of those properties have turned over and there are people now who just put up recently North Facing Fremore Drive, boat, boathouses or boat lifts. And, you know, today, more people on that North Facing Fremore Drive may well be interested. So I think that, given that words matter, we should think about, if we send this draft, modifying it to include all five Pecosa ancillary creeks, not just four. So I'm not opposed to the dredging per se. I'm for revising the draft. I'm for including the 25 or so houses on North Facing Fremore. And I am for excluding those of us who have sufficient depth. Because if we were talking cows and everybody wanted a cow, I already have one. I don't need a second one. And I don't want to pay for a second cow. This project, there was something else that was said tonight, words matter. You know, police, fire, schools, those are for the public good. And I pay taxes like everybody else, whether you're from York County or you're from Pecosa. We do that for the public good. This is for private good. Sure, there'll be residual benefits, whether it's the chemicals in the water potentially, unless we kill all the sea life by dredging, because I have a biologist friend who says this is going to be horrendous. So you get both sides of that. So I'm for revising the draft, include the 25 houses North Facing Fremore. Not being forced to pay if you have sufficient depth, this basically just means move it closer to Mr. Moore's property to start. And then to include language in what you might then send that states that we have to safeguard the creek from further accretion, which is layer upon layer upon layer of silt coming in, by restoring the two groynes or jetties coming from the Riggins side at York County and from the Causey side. And only in those ways do I think that Lambs Creek benefits. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you. Got the Lawrence part? Not sure I can, not sure I can do the, the Triggs.
Good evening, and Lawrence Triggs, 41 Carriage Hill Drive. Appreciate the time. I'm not going to be long. I echo all the positive flow for this dredging project. Moved here in 2010. At the time, I had, I bought a boat, had about seven or eight hours, I knew I was playing tides. Seven or eight hours of boat time, either side of high tide. Today, I've got maybe three. To the gentleman who said we have these boats, I've got a boat that drafts at 14 inches. And I, I can't take it out. So it sits in my backyard on a, on a trailer. And I towed it all last year. Didn't even use my lift. But again, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go into that, that too much. I do have, and I know you're not answering questions, and I respect that. But to be transparent and maybe in future, letter or something that you could put out, I, I don't understand what the 80% means and what the identified property owners are or who they are. So if, if that could be explained at some point in time, I think everyone would appreciate it. Not sure if that's, 80% was an arbitrary number or it's written somewhere that the council goes with this 80% rule. I, I don't know. But I, I close it by saying, what if you lived on Lambs Creek? What if you were sitting out here? Oh, even there? You know, what is your legacy when you walk out? Are you gonna be leaving where people say he didn't invest or she didn't invest in the future of Pecosa? Or are you gonna walk out where people say that person took the time, supported the community, invested in Pecosa and made it a better place? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All righty. Kathy McLean? McLean? Is that all right?
Yeah, Macklin.
Macklin, okay.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight. I didn't come here tonight to speak. This is my first time participating in one of these council meetings. But I came to gain knowledge and awareness of the situation. And I agree, and I, and I want to comment to Ms. Andrews there. When I was listening to you speak, I was on that recreational side. I was being selfish about, I just bought this waterfront property and I bought a boat and I'm excited to, to be on the water. But as the night grows on, I'm thinking of the environmental issues, too. I, too, live on the York County side of Lambs Creek. I'm a new resident. I've only been on, we moved in in December of 2020. So we've only been there 15 months. And I, too, have that mud, which I really think it's like quicksand, more than mud. I mean, I've tried to clean because I'm new and I'm excited to get my waterfront looking nice. I tried to clean all of the debris and the trash all around my shoreline, 300 feet of it. And you can't, you sink in it. There's no way you could clean that up the way that it is. So what I'm saying is don't sweep this under the carpet for another 15 years. If there's something we could do as residents, a subcommittee of some sort, to try to help you gain the knowledge, I know you guys are all busy, but this is really important. And when I sat back there tonight, I heard how passionate the people were to get this resolved or at least get it moving in the right direction. I've been in York County for over 40 years. I love York County. And it was my dream to live on the water. And I worked real hard to be able to get the home that I've dreamt of. And I hate to see it turning into a nightmare. So I just want to say I'll do whatever I can personally. Maybe a subcommittee to be formed, some, a task force to be formed, but somebody to get to the bottom of this, because we gotta be more proactive in the situation on Lambs Creek. And I got to tell you, too, that I am a real estate agent and I've been in real, in real estate for over 16 years. And I can't even begin to tell you the desire for people to live on the water in Pecosa and York County. Unbelievable. People want to be here on the water. Let's give them a beautiful backdrop that they want and they're paying for. And lastly, I want to say that I got a postcard here at the beginning of the year that my taxes or my assessment was going up. And I, it was going up by over $300,000 on my property. So now I'm going to be paying over $1,000 a month taxes on that beautiful waterfront property, right? So I would like to be able to say I'm getting my money's worth. That's all I got to say. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone that we missed or anyone who's, that wants to speak? Okay, council, let's take 10 minutes, please, and, and then we'll convene, okay?
Well, you missed an area because I've never said I didn't want to stay in Lebanon. Why are you apologizing? It's just so everybody at home can hear. No, 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 we can hear you, but the people at home can't hear. No, 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 we can hear you, but the people at home can't hear. Or Bud listening, right?
You know, I think my feeling is we should please feel too, like we need to know what the district is. And we need, I think Keith actually has some changes, he does some people bring up when we actually do. He had several changes where he said, I think before we sent the letter, I would like to see these changes. I'm just checking. I mean, I think for this point, there's just so much information gathering that has to be done and relooking at these people's, they don't need it. So we need to redraw and rework what district it would be. And my feeling is about, you know...